There's, he's technically still here.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so we like to call the City of Ocean Shores Planning Commission meeting two orders. We're in the Ocean Shores Library on Point Brown Avenue in Ocean Shores, Washington. It's Tuesday, April 23rd at 2:00 PM. We'll call. Thor, here. Carrie?
Here.
Mark?
Here.
Tom?
Here. Can you hear me?
Good, yeah, can you hear me now? Yes.
Now say "here."
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes. Awesome. Uh, could I get, uh, an approval or a motion to approve our meeting agenda? So, move.
Done.
Second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Heard. Um, we have two minutes, meeting minutes, to approve today since we did not have a forum last meeting. So, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the planning commission meeting on 13 March? So, move.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We also have approval of minutes for the Ocean Shores Planning Commission meeting that we held on March 26th. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So, move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. So, from there we'll go. Are there any public comments in the room? Yes, sir?
Well, I just wanted to say if you're still working on walking and biking facilities in the city. I noticed four stop signs were installed on Canal Drive. And I also noticed five biking there. It slowed down the traffic along both. Wait.
It is, and you know, that actually is an added benefit. It was not one of our initiatives, but that was a city initiative led by the mayor and others. Um, but yeah, it's had a great effect with those, yeah. Now, in the biking and walking, we, uh, we did get five of those items that were voted on by the public into the Parks Comprehensive Plan. So, right now, there is a 30-day window for providing feedback on that comprehensive plan. So, that would be a great time to roll in on and looking at those items. And, uh, just as a refresher, I have them here somewhere. This is my thought idea. I thought I had it up. Um, yeah. Here they are. Uh, not in any particular order except our two years and less projects. Complete connector from Point Brown Avenue, multi-use trail to the traffic circle just outside here. And the 15-mile outer loop utilizing greenways and other on-street pedestrian and cycling safety measures. So, those two that we determined were two years or less are in the comprehensive plan. In terms of two to four years, two of them also made it. Uh, Marine View Drive, multi-use track, as well as the Mid Doom Trail. Those are also listed on there. And four years or more, as we determined, uh, the walking biking lanes on Ocean Shores Boulevard. Now, that'll take a little longer, of course, which is why they're four years or more. But those five items came out of the survey that the public voted on.
Right.
We had 317 people vote on that. But as a follow-up to it, the comprehensive plan of the Parks Department would be a great place to add your comments to that and others.
Okay.
Any other comments? In the room?
No.
From afar?
Hi, everyone. Hi, everybody. Happy Earth Day or Happy Belated Earth Day. Uh, Vida Pierre has no comments at the moment. Thank you.
Give you, thank you, but every day is Earth Day, right? Jane, do you have anything for us today?
No, not today. Think so.
All right. Okay. So, we have been discussing, uh, over time, uh, as part of our agenda, our purpose of on page eight. Let me write it real quick here. Our purpose and guiding principles, um, update to, of Ocean Shores, Washington zoning and municipal codes. And we have a purpose, uh, of the planning commission update of the zoning and municipal code is to recommend actions to the city council that identify and correct discrepancies from the comprehensive plan of 2020. Simply decode and reflect the past and present realities of development within the City of Ocean Shores. And there's, uh, eight or nine of those. Any, uh, this commission have any updates or changes to those, the purpose and guiding principles? No? Okay. We also have challenges. Update of Ocean Shores zoning and municipal code. The challenges that we'll face on page nine of the agenda. And there's five of those. The history of pyramid zoning, transit lodging development, lack of available parcels for dedicated larger-scale future commercial development, continued growth of wetland encroachment, and outdated parking rules potentially restricting commercial development. On page 10, we have, uh, proposed zones that we've worked on, uh, over a period of time, last updated on March 26th. And we did have some changes there. Number, number 10 and 11, we have removed them, which can be located on page 12 of the agenda. And then on page 14 of the agenda, we go into business and commercial zones. The first change, uh, we have is on that page 14, accessory structures and uses as follows. We have stricken out D1 in that. Any other comments on that? We also, on page 15, have stricken out the rowhouse conditional use on 17.34.030. The next change that we've, uh, we've made is to the B2 zone general commercial on page 17. And we have highlighted, uh, existing one family, two-family, and multifamily dwellings. Construction of new residential dwellings shall only be permitted for a period of two years after adoption of ordinance implementing this change. Now, that's something that we've talked about, um, as something that we, we may have not probably have us vote on that again next time and send that off if we approve that change to the city council. Yes, Carrie?
I, I think one challenge we may have is, as we've discussed several times, is if there's a catastrophic failure of an existing residential
Yes.
in a commercial, how do we handle that? What is the process and procedure for that? Because I think we have to be prepared for that. And I would think that the council would certainly want to know, are they going to be allowed to build back a single family or at that point in time, if it's passed the two years? Do we say, mm, too bad, gotta be a broken surround?
Right. Any, any thoughts on that? In terms of what grandfather being that in?
Typically, it's non-conforming use, I guess. If it's highlighted in yellow, would it?
That means that is what we've proposed, uh, making changes to, uh, the wording.
Oh, it's not crossed out, but it's, thought it might be.
Right. Yeah. We, we haven't voted on that yet. It's just proposed wording that we've discussed at least once or twice.
I still have some concerns about how, how we, how we call existing transient rentals in those areas built specifically for that purpose, but amazingly, they're looking like single-family dwellings.
Yes.
I have no idea what to call them or what, what, what we do.
Well, and, and later, uh, in today's meetings, we'll be talking about definitions of, of how we have it in the code of, um, dwelling and dwelling structures and dwelling units. Interestingly enough, our definitions seem to be different than Washington State definitions in some cases. So, the question becomes when we get to talking through those later, do we want to look at changing how we call items to what Washington State calls them to reduce some confusion? And that's something that we'll need to discuss.
Do we have the state's definitions?
We have some. It's very interesting. I spent some time since the last meeting. Um, and for example, they, we do have dwelling, which is great because we have dwelling. Washington State has dwelling. Uh, Washington State has a dwelling structure, which we do. But interestingly enough, when you get down to dwelling multiple, they have one, we have one. But they don't have what we have, such as dwelling one-family, dwelling two-family, or dwelling unit. Because they've included it in their dwelling and dwelling multiple definitions. They've consolidated and they haven't split it out, one-family, two-family. And so, that's, that's what I found when I was looking at this, uh, this last week is, okay, well, do we need dwelling one, dwelling two if the state just calls dwelling and dwelling multiple? So, that's something that we'll need to discuss and decide if we want to change what we currently have or just leave it the way it is, even though the state has and looks at it differently than the way we have it currently written.
Um, maybe two we need to make to Thor's point, right? There are some things that we can do, I think, to make an overnight, short-term rental that looks like a single-family. Maybe we have to say things like, well, you can have a garage or carport. I mean, it's not gonna stop, we, we're never gonna stop people from actually living in there. Uh, it's just not gonna be possible, period. Uh, I don't think we want to be that big brotherish anyway, but we could do something like that. We could do something that says if you're kind of being an overnight rental in this area, you've got retail space on the bottom and the overnight rental's on top.
For an excuse?
Yeah, for example. But I, I think maybe, maybe those two items between how do we tell an overnight rental, transit rental, whatever we're gonna call it, maybe that needs to go in our challenges. Same thing with, uh, how do we grandfather in structures, you know, with the language and wording? Maybe that's where we need to kind of put those. Because I do think there're gonna be problems.
I think so. I think the grandfathering issue for sure. And then, you know, the definition.
Right.
Other cities have, uh, well, they all have same rules with you.
Right.
We call them, well, the building department calls them motels. Some reason.
That's just interesting.
Okay, uh, when you get a building permit, they call it motels, I think. I've got to tell you, but they call them all different things. So.
So, how do you keep them straight if they, if they're termed three different things? I mean, the operator's one, I'm sure. If you did the same thing in each one.
I don't.
But is it confusing that the, you know, the agency calls them different?
No, no. It's not confusing to me, of course, in the neighborhood, but still. And, and so we have, we, the only policy we have on STRs is no. Can't do it. Right, so. We can, but you can build a motel, you know, B1, B2, or any, like, they should call it a one-unit motel. More than all.
And maybe that's why they did, why they call them different things based on the zoning.
They don't, yeah, see, I mean, building department, I think, they go out and see.
Yeah, yeah.
And so. And then the state Supreme Court in Cairo, community's the, what is it? Kedaz County, I think, from, yeah, by Kedaz. Said that short-term rental, uh, is a residential use. Well, well, they have this, they, that could have been reaffirmed in Chalant County, too.
Absolutely.
Well, I think it's reaffirmed as well by the Geyer Esco. It says if you have, you own a home and you rent that home out for more than 14 days, it's a tax.
That's true, yeah.
There's tax implications for renting more than 14 days. If it's less than 14 days, it's kind of like giving $18,000 to anybody. There's no, there's no tax benefit or liability, uh, for anyone. But renting out your home for 14, more than 14 days, short-term rental, maybe, now you've got IRS issues.
Yeah, so, yeah, I already got mine. I understand, I don't know if I'm defining, but it's easy to defend them. I'm ready to make people to define them, not defend, but define them, so somebody in the future can do so. The only way I can think of is conditional use in the residential area. It's only things that makes easy sense.
And I really have to agree with that.
Yeah.
I mean, because at least they're gonna have to pay the half a hearing. Neighbors are gonna be notified.
Yeah.
And, yeah.
Which is typically what I think a lot of other communities do, too. To, to say that you can only have it on the top floor of a, a retail business presupposes there's a, there's an existing need for retail business on the bottom floor, which
Right.
certainly generally isn't.
Yeah.
Only way too small for much of that anyway, in many, in many cases, so. That just creates more problems than it solves, I think.
I, I think I agree with you, Thor, that maybe if we just make it a conditional use in a small residential.
Yeah.
Right? But we, we almost have to.
Or specific areas or neighborhoods or some, some crazy, I don't know. Then we get away from this, the problem the city Seattle had with households. The company was Correct. Right. And, and they said, what, they're gonna speak a number about what does a household look like? And then, yeah. And it, it, if it's a dwelling, it can't look like a boat. But on the other hand, when the Coast Guard gets involved, it says, well, where you guys' houses are supposed to look like? I mean, it just was not.
That's crazy. It was crazy.
It was a mess. You're right.
It was still a mess.
Yeah. Yeah, and it was never really solved.
No.
Just, it got too complicated.
Right.
Between.
And.
the city council.
And they never really had an objective. What were they trying to accomplish? I, I think, nobody, the household association never knew. But they were always depending their households because, yeah, it really doesn't like it. People living in boats for whatever reason. Sure. They don't like it for what, I don't know.
Okay. Okay, so, we'll have to look. Uh, I'll add that, uh, add those to our challenges and we can discuss them.
And I think the only problem with conditional use and redefine for a structure being built of what happens if there's already residential skin in the area that we're trying to redefine.
I would probably would.
I'm sure that you do.
Sure. And again, the IRS, IRS code's already there for short-term rentals, which the state calls them.
Sexion.
Um, and so, that's already established, that 14-day rule. And that's the house where you live and you just are gonna go on vacation and rent it out while you're gone. So, um, and they basically said that there's no difference between you staying in your house and somebody else staying.
Right.
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 That, that was in a, that was not in a municipality, that was in a rural area.
Yeah.
But if they ruled it for that, they ruled it for everything.
Yeah. No, they didn't say you couldn't prohibit it all again. But still, you just do it.
So, we have more discussion than add on this issue, for sure. Okay. Um, our next one we had highlighted is on page, I believe, 21. Resort tourist commercial, light commercial activities that are compatible, resort activities are encouraged, which makes sense in that area.
Jane, page 21.
Page 21. And then we get to what we were just talking about, transit rentals, um, and the conditional uses. So.
Yeah, and that makes sense to have conditional uses.
Yeah, it really does.
In that zone.
The other problem we're gonna run into with respect to B2 and B1 is the conversion of hotels to dwellings, such as apartments.
Yeah, we have to.
I understand.
The downtown.
Right. Is it a motel that doesn't look like, who's gonna locate their 30?
It's a car like a dog.
And that was mostly, I think, that was parking issue.
Right, because that's easy to solve. That's what Marshall said. The only difference that he cut off the top of his head was there's one space unless there's one and a half spaces.
Right, one and a half, if it's a long-term rental.
Right.
Space, if it's a hotel.
Hotel. So, that was the difference.
Yeah.
Uh.
Which I don't think really burdened many, uh, existing.
Uh-uh.
I don't think.
It did be that.
Yeah, I don't know if there was any complaints about parking.
Yeah, and that was the only criteria for conversion of use.
Right.
And again, I think the other challenge that we run into on that, not necessarily this group of the city as a whole, is it might be the life cycle of a hotel, but we're trying to keep the downtown corridor more tourism, more resort-like. Then you just end up with a bunch of basically residential.
Yes.
Sorry.
And honestly, renting a hotel is a particularly lucrative operation.
No, not on here.
40% typical occupancy, come on, C-TAC, it's 80%.
We're eating the bear for her, though.
Okay, what's in that water? There you go. Okay. Any other discussion on that? And then the next one that we had missed, I think, that might have been, if, except for our definitions, which take us down to page 27 where we list them, 17.04.155. And then the definitions themselves on page 31. Now, again, these are what we have. Dwelling, dwelling structure, dwelling multiple, dwelling one-family, dwelling two-family, dwelling unit, and dwelling unit accessories. The state doesn't have, in my research, all of those categories. They have combined them. They've got dwelling structure.
So, I took a look at these and when you read through ours, like, if you look at, you know, dwelling and dwelling structure, they say almost the same thing. Dwelling says dwelling means a building or portion thereof designed exclusively for residential purposes but not including hotel motel units designed for short-term occupancy. That's dwelling. Dwelling structure says dwelling structure means a building designed exclusively for residential purposes. And then it just goes on, including one-family, two-family, but not including hotel motel. So, I thought, well, do we really need both of those?
Well, I mean, it's interesting because if you look at the, them, um, it was based on the same ordinance, 837, in 2008, uh, and modified in, well, from
Tuesday, 74.
74, to 2008. So, yeah, I don't know. Uh, that's gonna be a very good discussion, I think.
Well, what I did, because I kind of went to these, I looked at what the state had, and I think the state is equally confusing personally.
It's bad, so.
And so, yeah. I think, I mean, that's like something else.
Okay.
It's all right. But what I did is I thought, well, let's try and tighten this up and make it just simple. So, I just took it to dwelling structure instead of building or portion thereof designed exclusively for residential purposes and may contain single-family and multifamily dwelling units but not including hotel motel short-term rentals designed for overnight stays or rentals of 30 days or less. Examples are, but not limited to, single-family homes, duplexes, multiplexes, and apartments. I mean, that kind of eliminates the need for dwelling, for dwelling multiple, dwelling one-family and dwelling two-family. It kind of tightens all of it up. And then on the dwelling unit, what I put down is one or more rooms designed for fam, for one family living and sleeping purposes and must contain complete kitchen sanitation facilities. In our language here, it just says for housekeeping. I don't know what that is, right? Not very clear. Um, uh, any room comprising in a dwelling shall have an entrance solely designed for access to only that specific dwelling unit and to all other parts of the dwelling unit therein. Example made is the main entry door allows access to the entire interior of the dwelling unit and all rooms contained therein. Because it was really, when I even read it, I thought, what do they mean? What are they really saying in our definition? It just wasn't, to me, clear. That, and, and doing this, it gets rid of the ambiguity of housekeeping. And, uh, and it also specifies that each unit has to have their own separate entrance only to that unit.
Yeah. It is definitely different.
Mm-hmm.
They obtained this code in 1974 from Bellevue.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if Bellevue's happened since then.
Grown a lot. Well, he wasn't much in 1974.
He was a little.
So, the state has, a dwelling is defined in Washington State as any building or structure though movable or temporary, a portion thereof which is used or ordinarily used by a person for lodging. It further goes on to say, a structure of that part of the structure, a structure or that part of the structure, which is used as a home residence or sleeping place by one person or two or more persons maintaining a common household, including but not limited to single-family residences and units of multiplexes, apartment buildings, and mobile homes. A residential living unit that provides complete independent living facilities for one or more persons and that includes permanent provisions for living, sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation. Which kind of goes to, again, the IRS laws of if you buy an RV and you have a sink and a toilet, it's considered a second home. If it's not, if it doesn't have a sink or a toilet, it can't be a second home. So, the same thing here. You must have those, uh, those items there, permanent provisions for living, sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation. Any one or two-family dwelling or townhouse or portion thereof used or intended to be used for human habitation for living, sleeping, cooking, or eating purposes or any combination thereof of any accessory structure. A residence containing living, cooking, sleeping, and sanitary facilities. That is Washington State's definition of a dwelling.
Has the term family come under attack and?
No, but I know you're.
They were good, but they do use.
Yes.
Yeah.
It does.
Yeah.
And we have a family definition. I haven't, I haven't looked at it, but it's just on the list here a little bit.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
The other concern that we had in the past, it was the term, uh, was how dwelling worked into multiple units on one lot. Going for multi-family. And that was that, at different times, the building department defined as meaning if you're going to have more than one living unit on a lot, say, a triplex lot, they had to all be under one roof. And we could fix that by saying building or buildings, but we didn't. And so, in, in light of the, uh, discussion about having smaller units on, on multi-family lots.
Right.
This would, this could still prohibit it, I don't know. But we had to fix it.
Sure.
Absolutely.
And we still have the 650 square foot issue that's out.
Right.
Uh, that we haven't heard back from.
Right. But, but they, but I don't know whether they, see, we have, we have another one that says you can put two buildings on one lot. It's specifically that. I've got which one it is, I was under, uh, what is it? I forgot which one it is, I was under, was the, I have no organization. But it's the only place it's addressed. And, and the city had committed to overlook that issue when they wanted to require you to build a fourplex with one single roof. So I'm not sure what to do with that.
Well, I think our score footage chart kind of brings that, kind of eliminates that too, I think, if I'm recalling correctly.
Yeah.
But we did address that thing, yeah, that was crazy.
Yeah, we did, we just haven't.
Yeah, we just haven't voted on it.
I've got it here for follow-up.
Correct.
We just haven't heard it back yet.
Can a, can each unit in a triplex, let's say, be less than six hundred square feet, a liv, living area?
Oh, I think, well, wow, that's a good question, but I think you had said six hundred and fifty square feet on my chart per unit, wasn't it?
I don't remember.
Yeah, so.
I mean, it hasn't passed, but hey, we have said that, I don't know.
Change section seventeen point five oh four two one zero D of the Ocean Shore Municipal Code to make the minimum floor space in all single-family residential zones six hundred and fifty square feet instead of the current values in the table that currently exists. And we have sent that forward to city council, but we have not heard.
But after the single-family, that's R one.
So would that prohibit studio? I mean, a couple of buildings that built some parts work for duplex dwellings now. I guess it must be okay.
But I think because they're on an R one, right? Six buildings are just residential. So I think we're coming to, you know, higher density areas. Because we talked about if you had a seventy-two hundred square foot lot, you could break it down into four eighteen hundred
Right.
square foot.
That's not R one.
No, no, not R one. But yeah, so I think we kind of did the math and worked out that way to say what the footprint, what happened, minimum footprint, because you've got your forty percent usage rule, right?
And they offered that in the last legislative session for R one lots, but I consider pass for coaches.
So then our next thing was to change section seventeen point five oh four two one zero E to eliminate the need for more than one-story dwellings to have a combined total floor area of one thousand square feet to a combined floor area of six hundred and fifty. The current code reads that. And the planning commission felt that making six hundred and fifty square foot the minimum floor space in all zones would both simplify and modernize the municipal code and result in the opportunity for more affordable housing. It also felt that in consideration of the recently implemented architectural standards of section seventeen point five oh point two one zero, a modern six hundred and fifty square foot house would continue the character of Ocean Shore's single-family neighborhoods. The planning commission also felt that the requirement for more than one-story dwelling to have combined floor, total floor area of at least one thousand square feet was unnecessary complex and had the potential to unnecessarily increase the cost of housing. So that is what we had discussed, agreed on, and passed forward. But again.
Correct.
Right, we are, we are waiting. So yeah, I think there is definitely some, some discussion here, maybe some consolidation here going forward, but.
I think in just having you read the states, and I read as well too, I think part of it was kind of ambiguous, right? What does this mean? I mean, because it doesn't talk necessarily, it says for, 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 now, board, what does it say in there? It's just really ambiguous language, I think.
Yeah.
That could open it up, and I, I think that here, we can certainly take flavors of that, but I'm all for making the code and definitions in the code as simple and clear as possible.
Right.
Because it gets confusing quick enough anyway.
I think that, that would be our focus, right? We don't want to make things more confusing.
And I think this state's definition is very cumbersome and confusing and ambiguous.
So. Any other comments on those? Because I know there's, there's more discussion to be had on those definitions.
I know it's in our definitions that we don't define condos or conventions. I don't know that we need to, but it's also not there.
No.
Yeah, it's a supersede our ability to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, the state just says dwelling structure means any building or structure though movable or temporary, or a portion thereof which is used or ordinarily used by a person for lodging. Now, that doesn't, you know, break it up, what hypo.
Yeah.
What hypo.
Except that they talk about multiplexes and duplexes and more.
Right.
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 But not in the sense of a common.
Though they do not list condos specifically, multiplexes, apartment buildings, and mobile homes.
And hotels and motels later on.
Right.
Hotels and motels and all that, but a condo just seems to be the one I got. There's various specific rules around condos.
They're just kind of, or maybe they're taking title rather than a type of dwelling.
Correct.
Any other discussion on those today? Do we have any committee member reports?
No, no.
Nothing for me.
Nothing, none.
The Hydune Trail now has the clam, and it also has the easier access for folks to get to. So if you haven't seen it, I suggest you go take a look at it. Done amazing job, it looks wonderful.
Incredible, it looks. It's been paved all the way.
It is.
Yeah, it's a very nice.
It's a very nice, yes. It's an easy walk too, it's nice.
It's close to the end, right?
Yeah.
Do you know if they're dedicating it tomorrow?
I don't, they are at two o'clock.
At two o'clock, okay.
It's the Sons of the American Revolution's dedication, not the city's.
Oh. Yeah, it's a very, it's a very nice walk, the, the only thing that my bride and I talk about is we get to the end and we wanted more. I mean, you know, you just want to keep walking.
The bike has to get to the end and not know that there's an end and it's happened, and they're very upset that they have to turn around.
It's a drop-off.
There is a drop-off, yes, there is.
You'd like somebody to do what they designed it.
Well, it's a start.
Yeah.
It's not a mound, it's a start, so.
Need to be mindful of that, yeah.
Should have been tied in somehow, the.
No, it was done with grant funding, and if you go any farther, that's private property and then tribal property. So we didn't have the option.
The road section.
That's the state.
Okay.
Then it's private property, then it's tribal property. So the grant that the city got was for what you see.
Yeah, and now hopefully we can do something maybe going the other direction.
On the Hydune Trail.
But yeah, so.
How far does it go to the west?
In, yes, exactly.
It's a great investment.
It stops there at the road.
Oh, the road.
It's a sudden stop.
Chancel.
Behind the barriers.
It's kind of a barrier.
It is at the end of the bridge. Yeah, it stops Chancelmere.
The side of the road is private property.
Yeah, so it's, it's really, really nice, so I encourage everyone to take a stroll, it's very nice. Okay. Any public communication, any comments?
I'm sitting here kind of as a homeowner, and Dorn, you might be able to shed more light on this. If I buy a six hundred and fifty square foot home and it's just me, how hard is that going to be to get financed because of the size?
It's okay. If I ask five hundred square foot, five point four, four or two, anything.
Yeah.
Los Scott Plaza is better than room sizes under the building code, international rule.
Same. Yes, since I can't sit in that seat at the next, next meeting, I got a couple of questions about the discussion you had here.
Okay.
The dwelling, first on the definitions, you explained that the city of Seattle's, or state's what it says, building or structure, temporary, blah, blah. Whereas here, the definition here just says building. It doesn't say or structure, what is a mobile home or a manufactured home considered? Is that considered a building?
A dwelling, sure.
Yeah.
But dwelling, but it's a, this, it says means a building. And I, and I have manufactured home before.
Sure.
Okay, and I would consider that a building, but a mobile home is, is that, would that be considered under this definition of building?
Manufactured home is the current definition, current description of all those kinds of.
A mobile, okay.
Yeah.
Except for. Like a single, okay. Okay, because I noticed that, that difference between the two.
Yeah, and we do have over, what area over here across the, the post office, the IDA, we do multiples of those, we have single wides as well as manufactured homes.
But going forward, you know, is, is a single wide possible?
Yeah, that's a square.
And in R one, which is, is.
It's a square.
Okay. And then going back to the discussion about the B one area and as far as, okay, you got an existing residential and it burns down or something, somebody needs to replace it. This area's been zone B one for some time, I can, how does a single home and family home get built on a B one?
Well, Neil, that's a really good question, and I believe we have four or five of them that have been allowed over time, right?
Wasn't that?
Yeah. A lot more than that, so we have, we have some.
Lot more than that.
Yeah, so now we have to worry about that if we change this wording that you can't build within twenty-four months of it passing, what does happen? And we've got to address what does happen if you have an existing home that has been permitted and something catastrophic happens? Are you just out, or are you grandfather in and you can build it again? But we need to make sure that the wording that we use works.
Well, going back to the wording here, I'm assuming the previous wording is still in here, like for example on, I still wear, on B two here. Okay, it says in yellow, you have existing one and you crossed off one. Okay, and then you add it in the, with the part in yellow, so I'm assuming the previous or existing language says permitted use, and it says one-family, two-family, or multi.
Right.
So actually, it is a permitted use of a B two, a single family. So that's how, so, so it, it actually is permitted in a B two, even though B two is stated as general commercial. Okay, so what you're trying to do is eliminate, obviously, the, any future. So it'd be hard, you know, I think you'd be forcing grandfather, somebody who's already in there, they have a
And, and you don't.
Have a, if they have a catastrophic event and need to replace, since it was permitted at the time that they built that structure.
Exactly, and you're right, it's complicated, and that's why it's taking us some time to discuss it.
And maybe there should be something where, here it allows you to build two years after adoption. If you're, so your grandfather, somebody who has the property now wants to build.
That's correct.
And maybe there should be a two-year period from the time of the, of catastrophic total loss of structure to build a new one, and you have to have the same type of timeframe.
Right.
Right.
So, I mean, that's all, those are all good ideas, that we need to come up as a, as a commission on how to put it forth to the city council to the mayor.
And I was just sure you'll find that basically in every single one of our old zones, residential is allowed. So kind of what we're trying to do is preserve the few areas that we have for commercial, like commercial, so that we can have businesses here and make them feel more business-like in that area, as opposed to a mishmash. Go, go take a drive down, I'm not telling, it'll be fine. It's just really tough, it is tough, and, and it's, you can't make everybody happy with it, but I think that we really need to focus on what are the, what's the intent of those zones and the comprehensive plan as well that came out in twenty twenty.
So that's, that's why we're working through this, and that's why we're discussing the wording. Because at the end of the day, it's the wording that is going to be used for permits and other things, and, yeah, so. We rely heavily on guidance in that regard before we do anything. Any other questions? Anything from our.
Yes, I have a couple of comments. You might want to check your auto-correct for your spelling of the word ordinance. It's accepting ordinance, which are, I don't think you want to use that word. I like the idea of having transient rentals be a conditional use, needing a, a conditional use permit. The other thing is, you're, you're going to need a definition for light commercial. You're, you're putting in a term in there that is, is vague and needs a definition, but you may have some unintended consequences if you allow that language. That completes my comments, thank you.
Thank you. Tom, anything?
Do what? My only concern is, is that we can change the codes all we want, or the descriptions, but who in town's going to enforce them, because we already have issues with some places already?
Bird. Jane, anything?
No, thank you, you guys have a great day.
Hey, you too. Our next meeting will be held on
You think it'll be due?
Go ahead.
Fourteen May at two o'clock here in the Ocean Shore's library. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Who will be taking that?
The minutes will be, actually Steve, I'll talk to Steve, he can say it next time, you're welcome. Okay. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned at two forty-seven.